Good evening, everyone, and welcome as I call to order the regular school board meeting of independent school district number 882 on Monday, September 22. It is 6:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, looking for approval of tonight's tentative agenda. Soul moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. To all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. All right, we have no citizens' comments this evening. We'll move right along to item number five on our fiscal stability, looking for a motion for our consent agenda.
Soul moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. To all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to item number six, collaborative connections, one of our favorite parts of our board meetings. I'm going to pass the mic on over to Superintendent Eric Olson to talk about the gifts we're receiving as a district.
All right, our first gift is $3,000 for the Monty Pythons Robotics Team to assist with team expenses, and that's from Jean Haas Foundation. We also have the Ellison Foundation bringing forth $3,000 to the Rally to Read Initiative for families who have children zero to four years of age. And then we have special guests in our audience here. We have a team from Live Like Gina Foundation. I'm going to invite the whole team up to join Jackie Holker up for a presentation of a substantial check to go to our C5 program, our 18 to 21-year-old program. And I get to turn over the mic to Dinah Schaefer, who is just going to say a little bit about the Live Like Gina Foundation and then their partnership that they're creating with our Sherburne Northern Right Co-op.
Perfect, thanks. So, yes, for those of you who don't know, we lost my identical twin sister, their daughter, last August 1st, and we've just started this foundation in her honor and for her legacy. And part of the foundation is giving back to people and foundations and schools, whatever, that just embody the Gina way of life or just things that she was passionate about or loved. And we just had an event on August 1st this year, the Live Like Gina Fest, and we raised, I think, over $9,000, right? Yes. And then we decided to give $2,000 to C5, and then also our home church is Resurrection Lutheran Church, and their VBS program raised just under $2,000. So, we actually more than doubled matched that to give to C5 program, which if you don't know is a transition program for adults with special needs or, I guess, young adults, 18 to 21-year-olds, just learning life skills and whatnot. But we know that Gina would just adore this and be so proud and excited to see how this will impact the program, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Of course.
Awesome. We're going to get some photos of.
That would be great. Let's be not behind this meeting.
Not behind it. I don't know where you want it.
Yeah, you can do this, doesn't it?
And I just want to say it's incredible to see the difference that Gina's continuing to have on this world as well as the Schaefer family and the impact you guys continue to have even just here within our school district and our community as a whole. So, I just want to thank you two for all of your time and your effort and how you're giving back.
Therefore, be resolved by Monticello School Board number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. Jean Haas Foundation, $3,000 for Monty Pythons Robotics Team. Ellison Foundation, Mark for $3,000 for the Rally to Read Initiative for families of zero to four-year-olds. And Live Like Gina Foundation, $4,000 for the Sherburne Northern Right Support for the C5 18 to 21-year-old program.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes 6-0. And again, our district could not do the incredible things that we're doing and have such an impact on students without our community giving donations like that. It's absolutely incredible how our community bands together to help make a difference in our school district. So, thank you to all those who have donated. All right, we get to move on to item B. We are so excited to welcome for the first time our student representatives this year. We've got Dawson Blake, Natasha Fortzy, and Jordi Gertz that are going to head on up to the podium and give us their first official report of the year. We're excited to hear from you guys.
Good evening to all of you. We'd like to take this moment to, of course, thank you guys for this opportunity that we've been given to present in front of you guys and to be your school board reps for this school year. With that, we're going to introduce ourselves to you all. I'll start. My name is Natasha. I'd like to start by saying this summer I was the Monticello Schools representative at Girls State, so I spent a week at Bethel University doing that. My school activities, I would say my main involvement is with the Unified Club where I'm also on that board. I've been involved since my freshman year. It is just such a wonderful thing to be a part of. I'm currently on that board. What we do is we plan our in-school and out-of-school events, so it's really fun to see those behind the scenes. My school year, what I'm currently looking at is I do have a few rigorous courses, those college classes, which of course set you up for your future, but I also have a good balance where I spend some of my time at the elementary school with our youth service program. That is good setup for my future because I'm planning on going into elementary education. So, that is all I have to say with that. I'll let Dawson take the mic.
Hello, my name is Dawson Black. I'm one of you guys' student representatives, and over the summer I was the boys state nominee. And right now, most of my course load is focused very strongly towards getting my certified nursing assistant certification, so that takes up a lot of my classes. Along with that, I'm doing some other, just AP Bio. I was, I did most of my rigorous work last year, and this year I'm focusing more on getting into the field and actually getting my toes in the water and working at a nursing home. Along with that, I was on the knowledgeable team that brought Monticello to our, what's the word I'm looking for? Region champion, I think? District or region? I can't remember. And then along with that, I'm also a big part of the tech team. I'm one of the two awesome tech captains. And I'll excuse myself after this because I have to go back. We are going ahead and facing Chisago Lakes right now at Memorial Stadium, but that's what I got for you.
I'm Jordi Gertz. I have the awesome opportunity to be here with two of my peers as a student representative. Myself, I am the captain of our school robotics team, and you've seen me here presenting regarding that. Along with Dawson, I am on the school's tech team, so we're around at the stadium anytime there's events going on. And then this year, my class load is taking on various CIS and AP classes at the college level, so I can really prepare myself for college after high school. So, speaking of a high school, we are about 15 days into the school year, and I have to say that we are in full swing in our routine. Activities have started, sports have started, and great things are happening all throughout the building, and we have some more to talk about that here.
Okay, so I kind of went the route. I talked to some freshmen and some seniors, the oldest and the youngest. I think with the freshmen, a lot of what they said is so far it's pretty similar to the middle school. They're really enjoying that they have a lot more freedom. That was the main thing that they said, they have more freedom in their classes, in their passing time, do as they like. Overall, I've noticed, because I TA for a ninth grade class, so I've kind of noticed that they seem to be doing pretty good. They're seem to be transitioning into the high school, and like Jordi said, we've got a good routine going. On the flip side, when I talk to the seniors, I think the freshmen, there's definitely stress around trying to settle into a newer building, new teachers. They're the youngest, it's difficult for them, but more for us and the upperclassmen, the stress is around planning our futures. So, there's definitely that part. And then I know Jordi has more to speak on the student life.
I've had the opportunity to speak with some of our freshmen. I just wanted to get a grasp of what the general consensus was of our freshman class on this new school year, and I've got some direct quotes here. One that said, "The balance of classes for freshmen is nice, and they have a wide variety of subjects." I know that the freshman class has some more limited opportunities for their schedules, but as they go throughout high school, they have those elective opportunities. Another student said that the workload is manageable, but it is a very different pace from middle school. So, you can tell that our building is definitely focusing on being mature and being at a higher level, being the leaders in our district, and so that is wonderful to see in our, even our younger students at their high school. And then lastly, one more student said that there are a lot of sports and activities available for the younger kids. You don't just have to be an upperclassman to be on the varsity teams, but there are opportunities everywhere in our sports and activities.
Along with some of those activities today is kicking off our homecoming week, and so along with that, we have a week full of dress-up days. Today was pajama day, so you're welcome for changing and not showing up in pajamas. Along with that, tomorrow we have a twin day. Either wear your twins gear, or you can twin with another person and wear the same thing. Wednesday, we have our jerseys, and then on Thursday, we have class colors. So, the freshmen are all going to be purple. Our sophomores are wearing orange, our juniors are pink, and then us seniors will be green. And then on Friday, we're all supporting Monty Magic, wearing our black and red as we take on Buffalo. And then on Saturday, we have our highly esteemed homecoming dance, which we're pretty excited for. That'll be at the high school. And then last Thursday, the seniors had our senior sunrise, where we got to meet out at the Memorial Stadium Field and take our picture, got some breakfast, got to hang out with our peers. And then last Friday, we had our college fair, which had about 60 to 70-some colleges show up and present a lot of different pathways to our entire student body, which was awesome. And so, with that, that is our synopsis that we have came with. If there's any questions or comments regarding our school year so far.
Great board. What kind of questions do we have for our new representatives?
I just appreciate Dawson, you not asking me to twin with you on pajama day.
I want to say senior sunrise has been a great tradition, and it looks like the students really do enjoy that. I've seen a lot of pictures on social media, and it looks like it's something that everyone looks forward to doing.
Yeah, it is everyone. We are having a lot of participation, not just from the seniors, but all class grades. In our homecoming dress-up and also in fall sports, we have over 400 participants.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Awesome. If that is all, then thank you for having us, and we'll be here every month, so.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing more of you and getting to know you each better. Thank you. All right, next, item C. I'd like to bring, and you guys are dismissed if you have to leave, or you're welcome to stay. I totally understand if you've got additional activities you need to make it to. Next, item C. I'd like to bring up our activities director, Gary Revnig, to go over the Monticello High School League's speech application for cooperative sponsorship with STMA.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Just a quick comment on our student reps. You're in good hands. Ever thought of running a video board?
And he is big in first robotics, and we went to receive that donation if it wasn't for him and his mom and all the time that they put into that program, so thank you. As far as tonight, the co-op, we currently have a co-op in boys hockey with Maple Lake. We also have a co-op in girls hockey. Couple of years ago, St. Michael approached us and asked if we had any students that might be interested in marching band, because we do not have one, and they had lower numbers than they were hoping. I believe we've had eight to 10 students the last couple of years join them in marching band. No cost to our school district. They pay, sign up through a community ad, and that money goes right back to St. Michael to help with their marching band expenses. One of the students that's in marching band approached me two weeks ago and said, "It's her senior year, and could I, could we please look at adding speech?" In all my years at Monticello, we haven't had the participation numbers to have a speech team. My co-op hasn't worked in the past. So, I reached out to St. Michael to see where they're at with numbers because of marching band, and they said they would love to have us. They only have approximately 20 students, and they could use some help. So, I'm asking the school board to please approve a co-op in speech with St. Michael, and we'll see how many students we can get, but I'm not asking for any school district dollars. They will bill us $300 per student, and that student would be responsible for getting to St. Michael for their events and the speech program. Any questions? Correct. That's the fee that they'd be charging over at St. Michael-Alberville.
And that 300 is higher than what the typical support contribution would be.
Yes.
No, my question is why would we...
You know, just trying to make things cost neutral. Yeah.
Yeah. That's what St. Michael-Alberville said, that they would charge us 300 because they lose money as a school district with their speech program. I think their students are paying 250, but they have to pay for judges, transportation, and so on, so they thought 300 would be a fair amount.
When is speech season?
I think it starts November or December, so I haven't looked into that yet, but it's a winter activity.
I don't know, I think it's a good thing. I just pointed discussion is, is there any way we could cost the student the same as those that are being the same in sports on there? So, it's a reduction in what their cost would be.
If we had a speech team, how much would we charge?
200.
That's where I'm going.
Well, can we see what we have for signed up for kids, and then maybe it's something we look at?
Absolutely. I think the important thing is to get it approved today so that we can fill out the paperwork and turn in with Minnesota State High School League, and we can decide what we want to charge. We don't have it open at this time for registration, because we need school board approval anyway, so it's all to be determined.
Do you know St. Michael would cap the number of participants from Monticello?
They will not.
And do you have to know how much we're going to charge for activity fee?
Probably the sooner, the better, just because that way I can start promoting it, because the students will ask what the fee will be.
Which it meets tonight. Could be a topic of discussion. All right, good. This is an action item on the co-op with STMA for speech. This is an action item on the co-op with STMA for speech.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no.
S is six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we're going to item number D. Help me welcome up to the podium head baseball coach, Cole Diaboll, to talk about their baseball trip for 2026.
All right, well, thanks for having us. I know I was up here two years ago, asking to go to Arizona. So similar this year, but just a different venue. But my name is Cole Diaboll, I'm the head baseball coach. I also teach at the high school, social studies, but also I am the OJT coordinator this year. It's a new role for me.
Ryan, that assistant coach, sixth grade teacher, language arts at middle school.
So Tampa this year, we decided to go a different route, mostly to make sure we have enough teams that we are able to scrimmage when we're down there. Arizona is a newer venue, and last spring break, it was a week earlier, so we were concerned that we would not have enough teams to scrimmage against. And that would be a problem, even in Arizona, last time we ended up scrimmaging Mankato West out of Minnesota. So that does happen, but we think Tampa will be a really good venue. A couple of reasons why, and I know you guys went through this, so I'm not going to go through everything. Number one, we're moving up to four A baseball this year, which is going to be, it's going to be tough competition. Even though we had a really good section, having the Totino Grace, for example, in our section, it's going to be really difficult, and we want to make sure we have a head start to that jump up to four A. But then obviously just all the things that you want to get out of sports, the team camaraderie, the chemistry. And we had a great summer, the summer of VFW team won the state championship, and we're hoping to build off that and put that into our high school season. Couple of things, the trip takes place during spring break, so we will not miss any school, and all money will be fundraised and paid for by each family, along with fundraisers and any donations that we get. Right now, tentatively, those are our leave times and back. Again, that won't be verified until we get approval, and I can meet with the parents. Hotel accommodations, they have this Tampa Bay spring training, has different packages you can choose from, and they're all pretty good pack, pretty good ones. We are leaning towards the Serata Beach Resort, because we feel like it's going to be a fun family event. Many families will come and stay right at the resort. That would be four players per room, and two meals per day are part of that cost, and we would have four coaches coming with supervision. We have state high school league rules we have to follow. We will not break any of those high school league rules when we're down there, so they will accommodate everything that we ask them to accommodate. We're looking at bringing twenty players, and that would be two different teams, we'd have a varsity and JV, so we'd get plenty of opportunities to scrimmage. This is Gavin, if you could click on that link just real quick, just to show you an itinerary of what that would look like. So just a little sample schedule. This company's been around for a long time, they have really good reviews, and they break it down day by day. The goal is always to keep kids busy, not bored, and that's what we definitely did in Arizona. We didn't have much downtime at all, and we would plan for that as well when we're down there. And I think staying even closer to the beach, which is closer to our facility, would allow us to really have a really good time. All right, thanks Gavin. So we'd be there for five nights, that's what, that's how they, that's their cost. They want everyone to stay at least five nights. We'll go back to the other slide, Gavin. Like I said, the coordinators will set everything up. As of right now, this is what we're thinking. Last trip was fifteen hundred dollars per family when we went to Arizona. By the time we gave the final bill, we had it down to nine hundred with the fundraisers that we did. And that's even with coaches' costs built in, van costs built in. We had a bunch of businesses that donated, and you can see on this one, our four-day camp, us coaches run a four-day camp, and we donate all those camp profits right to the trip as well, to help keep the costs down for the kids. And we'll come up with more ideas, but right now, we have a couple dates already set up, similar to last year, to try to keep the costs down for our families. Other than that, we just, you know, going through the different costs that I have to, you know, there's an upfront reservation fee I have to pay. Once we get approval, I would do that right away, and then I would have a parent meeting this week, and we'd go from there and just start putting it into action. Other than that, we will invite our, all our juniors and seniors, and then from there, we have a really small senior class. We only have two or three senior baseball players. We have a very big junior class, so there would be a few sophomores that we would ask as well, ones that had really good seasons last year and contributed this summer to our VFW state team. Players not going will still have practice when we are not at spring break, just like they did last time. Okay, other than that, you know, it's just questions that you probably had already looked through. So if they can't afford it, you know, we do our best to give them opportunities, we let them work at camps, and we get paid for that. But ultimately, the players are responsible, the fundraiser, and pay for their own trip. There's no penalty if you can't go, some people can't go, and then the coaches will be the chaperones. I said our coaches' costs are already built in, and ideally, we like to go every two years, but it just depends if our spring break lines up. This year it did. And otherwise, that's all I have. Just ask the board if you guys have any questions.
Is twenty limited by us, or is the twenty players limited by the program venues?
Twenty players would be limited to ensuring that all players that are going are going to have a good experience, so having two teams of ten ensures that everyone's going to get a lot of playing time. The more players we bring, and the less playing time that ends up happening. If we had like a big junior and senior class, we could, we would definitely look at raising that number. We don't want anyone to be left out.
Edison, what they were limited, or we were?
Yeah, no, they don't.
Is weather any more of a concern in Florida than Arizona?
It is. We've been to Florida, I've been there three different times over the course of my coaching career, and at least two times, we had one day where it got rained out.
And how?
Or at least part of the day got rained out.
Okay. And if that happens again, does that deter you from going to Florida again?
No, because what can happen is, again, we can only scrimmage three of the five days, so they could bump our schedule to another day.
Thanks.
Any other questions? This is an action item.
Make a motion to approve the baseball trip proposal?
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. S is six zero.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Thanks for coming. All right, we will move on to item number seven, teaching and learning. First up, item A. Help me welcome to the podium our Monticello Middle School principal, Jeff Sherber, and Monticello Middle School assistant principal, Rachel Sanquist, to go over building goal updates.
Thank you for giving us a chance to share our building updates and our goals for the upcoming school year. Rachel and I were up here last spring. We gave an update of the hard work the teachers and the students did last year, with some, just some authentic examples of what the teachers worked on, as well as the hard work that the students did. Since then, the district met, we had a data workshop this last summer, we all got together, and Laura led us in some pretty healthy discussion, took a hard look at some of the data that was available more so then than it was when we did our last presentation. And we put together some district goals, and I think Laura had shared this data with you, and these specifics regarding the district goals. And the challenge tonight is to share with you our roadmap at the middle school and what we would like to do. Again, Rachel can kind of go over some of the specifics about what the building's doing, what the students are doing, and what the teachers are doing. When we're done, we'll turn it over to the high school principals, and then hopefully you'll see some continuity in vision, continuity in the allocation of resources, and continuity in all the things that we're trying to pull off here. Next month, you'll hear from our elementary principals, and they'll do the same. We've worked very hard to get on the same page, use multiple sets of data to share with you how hard we're working to move on and increase our reading, our literacy, improve our K-12 attendance, four-year graduation rate, and implementing that vision of a learner. So this is where we started. This is kind of our playbook of how we plan to get there. So those three key components are at the top of every agenda item we have at the middle school. We focus on the instructional framework. You'll see some familiar language in there from our previous presentation. We worked hard on the science of reading, worked hard with accommodations and modifications for students, and really drilled down to see what we could do that would impact and influence all the students, not just a few. So there were some school-wide strategies that we would work on, we want to build on those. The collective FC component is specific to having everybody do what they can, and they feel like they're on the same page, and the kids should feel that when they go from classroom to classroom. And then we would use some very observable impact indicators that'll help us indicate how we got here. So those are very key. Rachel's going to take a minute and talk a little bit about how we use that down into her key components here.
Right, so as you just saw, our building focus areas and goals are focused around our instructional framework. So we have that MTSS umbrella, that's how we do business. We're drilling down further, we're getting into the instructional framework, and when we say that, this is what our instructional framework looks like and is. So this speaks to the different components of high-quality instruction, the planning, the creating of the learning environment, high-quality, like tier-one instructional strategies, and how we assess our students. And so if we're asking our teachers to, you know, work on our instructional framework, those green stars on the screen are actually areas that they identified as how our instructional framework connects directly back to our building goals and focus areas. So as we talked about the science of reading, as we talked about working with our EL learners, as we talked about, you know, getting, digging into accommodations and modifications for all students, these are some of the areas that they saw themselves really focusing their instruction in and on. So that conversation happened August 25th, I want to say, during workshop week, and we're now building on that momentum. We had an all-staff meeting about it in September, and that will be very regular. So if you click to the next slide, Jeff, this is kind of a, what will you see our staff doing to really focus in on that instructional framework focus, on that, on those building focus areas? So at the top, you see the ILT team, it's Instructional Leadership Team, and that's our group of instructional leaders within our building that really sit at the table and help us figure out where we need to go instructionally, and how they can get their cohorts, their departments, on board and moving collectively forward in the same way. So they sit at the table, we plan for what that all-building cohort learning looks like. So it's that planning and preparation with our ILT team, and then we move into an all-staff cohort meeting, so they sit with their departments. And so all of our science teachers sit together, all of our specialists, and we go through components of the instructional framework that we've identified as key focus areas. So that happened in August, that is going to happen in September, every, each month. And then we dive even further into that, and they meet separately in their own cohorts. And so they, each science group meets separately, and then they really look at the application. So what's a key tangible thing that I do that relates to the learning I did two weeks ago? And throughout all of that, we're really asking our staff to collect feedback from each other, to learn from each other, to constantly reflect, and make sure that their instructional strategies, and you know, it's almost a big-borrow-and-a-steel situation. If there's great strategies out there from other staff members, we want them to take those on too. So that sharing out and reflection really makes it tangible and applicable to our staff. And then if we drill all the way down, we're also asking them to set individual goals, which aligns to the cohort learning, which aligns to our building goals, and all the way up to our district goals. So you'll see that alignment in our middle school, and it's just a constant state of reflection that we're asking them to engage in as they focus on that instructional framework.
This last slide just references what each building is doing, and specific to the vision of a learner. At the middle school, we're very proud of the hard work we do, building connections, establishing relationships, giving students a safe place to be, and then really working on having them own their own learning. I will share, along with all those things and the hard work that the middle school staff is doing, Rachel and I have had a healthy discussion on doing a better job of being very intentional about that last bullet, those data-driven discussions. With Laura's help, we hopefully can package up some usable data that doesn't, it doesn't sit on a shelf. It's something that'll be part of the culture of their discussions every month, and giving them an opportunity to pivot and address everyone, including some of those diverse learners, and providing that opportunity for staff. It can be a challenge every month and getting a culture, and that's why a key part of that is those instructional leaders that we work with every month.
And I want to just jump in there, too. That work is really intentional at the middle school, but it's also not without the help of people in the DO, and like Laura's team of instructional staff, Emily Mitchell, Michelle Holt House, Kristen Hall, Jared Hines, that's an instructional team that really helps us bring our vision into life and make things applicable and helpful for staff. So I just wanted to shout out Laura and the team, because they've been really helpful in that regard as well.
And that was an expectation from Eric when we got together this summer, is to clarify how we can use these folks in a more cohesive and have some continuity from building to And that brings us back to the goals that we have at the beginning, or these focus areas. It kind of brings us home to that, this is the last slide. This is like, again, how we start every meeting, and how we put together the agenda for each cohort meeting. So we'll open it up for questions before we turn it over to our high school colleagues.
Questions? We have some middle school data, too, here. That would be nice if you guys kind of told us your thoughts on that in particular. But then also, when they're meeting monthly, is what I understand, right?
Couple of different times, yep. But yes.
Different times, at their end of their groups, and then, yep. So how do they know, like, if they're not hitting the benchmark they want, or they're finding a gap, do they have some leeway, or do they have connections with people with the district staff, with Laura and her staff, on how to make adjustments on the spot to get better outcomes? If they find that they're not getting the outcomes that they're looking for, because you said data-driven, right?
So that's kind of the first step here. So we just, our fall fast bridge window just closed, so that's the first, like, screener, that reading and math screener that we do. So that's kind of the next step, is to dive in and look and see where we landed with that. I think it closed on the 20th.
You guys are just seeing this as it's posted to us?
This is last year's, right? This is, so this is last year's data, I believe. So there's three windows each year that we assess our students. So this, I believe, Laura, it's last year's fast data and MCA data, yep. But like, what we're saying is now we'll look at this year's, too, so we'll look at, ideally, in a perfect world, data-driven.
Yeah, I can be very specific about that. For example, Laura's going to meet with representatives from our eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade, and sixth grade math team, one rep each, and we're going to triangulate the data. As Laura had put on this sheet, one piece of data doesn't indicate or support the other. Sometimes they do indeed measure two separate things, but our team is going to meet to look at this, to package up an approach, because their math team, for example, is adopting, is looking at three different curriculums right now, very specific to this. If you remember the discussion that Nate Russell had last spring when he was here, that group of teachers owned those scores, to include that seventh-grade score for reading. Very specifically, they know, we've got some work to do in that regard, and breaking it down to strands, and the cell of kids that struggle the most. And that's why, if you go back to one of those first slides, it's specific diverse learners, because those are the kids that we've had to manipulate the curriculum the most for. So when we selected a curriculum, we wanted a curriculum that didn't just hit that sweet spot in the middle. We knew we wanted something that would address some of our struggling readers, and that was our decision for that English Language Arts Committee to select, but they embrace that, and they're prepared to present to you this spring the hard work that they did in that regard. They also wanted to celebrate some of those math scores as well. So it is data that we're taking a good, hard look at, and part of being the culture of a healthy meeting is having the leaders in that group get the data in front of them early enough so they can absorb it, and then use it in a capacity. get the data in front of them early enough so they can absorb it and then use it in a capacity that makes sense.
Have you had any comments from the, the teachers and the classroom staff about whether or not these approaches have helped them or have been helpful, clarifying, helpful, and that sort of thing?
I would say yes. As late as last week, I was visiting with one of our eighth-grade math teachers, who shared that one of the strategies that we used last year, it was something that was shared from a sixth-grade teacher, actually, a sixth-grade science teacher, that the whole eighth-grade team embraced. And it actually has, has to do with transitioning between activities, and it's created more time to teach, and she's pretty proud of that. She's so proud of it that she decided that that was one area, when we went over her evaluation, that she was going to adjust and modify her own personal goal. Rachel shared that district goal, the building goal, and then hopefully, if you did get a chance to see some of the teachers' personal goals, they would share that that's all tied. They're really taking a good, this is the first year we waited for the teachers to put their personal goals together until the end of September, so they can get this data, so they can look at it and put their own personal goals together.
That's good to hear, because sometimes the ideas are there, but they're so concrete, how to act, so abstract, that how to concretely apply them becomes questionable.
You may have other examples, but that was just one that I shared just from late last week.
And I think the structures are even more intentionally in place this year as well, with that all-building cohort learning, and then the actual application within each separate cohort group, so that they get to see more of that, like, exemplar examples from teacher to teacher.
So what was the biggest driver in grade six when they transitioned from six to seven in fast bridge? They were from 74%, 63% the next year, following that class?
Specifically, I can't answer that right now. Casey's, whether, what the difference is. I know that we have three different sets of curriculum. In other words, we haven't adopted a math curriculum at the middle school since 2011. And I know Laura's helping lead that discussion, and that's going to be part of the discussion we'll have from grade level to grade level as we look at the three different curriculums that we're.
So then if we don't hit our target next year?
I will address, I have a superintendent update. I mean, instead of doing it all twice, I'll probably just continue to let them have their presentation, and I'll follow up with, that is on Goal Area 4 for me.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more of your updates as the year goes on. All right, next, I would like to bring up to the podium item number B, Monticello High School Principal Lori Hansen and Matt Colwell, and Assistant Principal Kami Dahlstrom to go over the high school building goal updates.
Yeah, we thank you for inviting us, giving us a few minutes. It's good for us to obviously talk through what our students need and how we're going to get there. And I appreciate following the middle school. They did a very nice job of laying the groundwork, and they're talking the same language as us. So I'm going to go to, I'm Matt Colwell, this is Lori Hansen, this is Kami Dahlstrom. You've seen all of us before, but just formally introduce ourselves. So thank you for the few minutes of time here just to talk about the high school. That next slide is really a big part of our why. Gavin, I got this. In the background, you know, that's just so much of what we do. And, and we could just pause for a second and talk about the ultimate goal in getting our students to launch into their, their futures. It's a, it's a huge celebration in any and every way we graduate students. And that is our primary goal, to get the students ready for their next steps. And that's something we don't lose track of. It's kind of in the back of our minds throughout all of this. When we talk about how we specifically get there, it's a much-of-what, and I really, Eric, you have to be proud, because you've always talked about having continuity between buildings and the district, and how we do things. And just about everything they just said with regards to how they're doing their goals, we are following suit, we're in line with it. It's year two for us in a lot of ways with our cohorts, and how we're doing our PD on a very consistent basis. And it does tie into MTSS and our, our tier-one instructional practices, which impact every space, every classroom, every student, and every instructor or educator. So we spend a lot of time talking tier one, because of its impact across the entire building. And we do that, when I say frequently, three times a month. We're in our cohorts, we call them, in the media center before school, usually Wednesdays. And staff there spend a lot of time reflecting, collaborating, and talking about the instructional practices. This year in particular, we're focusing on, when you saw Rachel's instructional framework there, we're focusing primarily on our diverse learners. And what we mean by that are the learners that learn so many diverse ways. We want to know our learners, and we're really emphasizing that with our staff this year, with not only who they are, building connections, but also the data they bring with us. We are trying to hone in on as much data as we can. And that's one of our primary goals at the high school as well. So that's big-picture things. Tier one involves all of us. And then we additionally are trying to build and enhance our tier-two systems of support, which get down to more individual levels. Students that need additional supports and staff that can provide that. We want to do that in the most meaningful way. And we'll talk more about that as we roll through our slides.
And I'll piggyback, because what you saw with Rachel and Jeff's slide, we could probably put with ours as well, because we use that word collectively as well. So you saw them put up an ILT to a cohort to individual application, and then that continuous cycle of improvement in reflection and application. We follow that same model. Actually, I think they follow our model, so we'll. So we're doing, as Matt said, we're in year two. As we talk about our diverse learners, what we're talking about is our staff are very, very strong in their content. They're very, very strong in building relationships. We need to know who our students are as thinkers and learners, and that's where we're using that data. EduClima is going to be brand-new to the high school this year. We'll be introducing it this Wednesday. We're meeting with our ILT team again to really talk through, how do we look at data to look at what literacy means in a ninth-through-12th-grade building? So that's where we're going to start. And it really ties into all of those bullet points at the top there, that we've got to know our students, so we know the strategies, that we can help build the bridge to get the content to stick, to stick for them. And so we have our ILT that leads our cohorts, that we meet two to three times a week. We look at, this is data of learners, and how do we get them to learn AP Bio, to Advanced Math, to Career and Tech Ed, to Youth Service, and value in all of those learnings, and, and what that brings. So it's that same model that the middle school shared. Those go through those two first arrows. One of our other goals is within the MTSS, is our outreach with our family engagement. So that's always a priority at a secondary level. It's not as easy as it is when you're maybe in elementary, even into middle school, where we've got to find creative ways to get parents and guardians, families connected to us, and how do we continue to do that? A conference model would be a really good example for you to think through. It's easy to get a captive in front of a really elementary, even a middle school. It's a little less effective, maybe, at a secondary level. So we're trying to find those creative outreach opportunities where we're getting feedback, we're getting family in front of us. And then that last bullet point is our student attendance. That's been a goal, I think, across the district for a number of years now. It's at 80%. We have new systems in place that are both whole building and then individual, that we really are trying to understand what students are going through, what they're bringing to us, how that impacts their attendance, because if they're not there, if they're not ready to learn, they're missing out on those learning opportunities in front of our staff. That's our, our kind of snapshot. Just, again, we've been in that, those goals for year two. We're refining them. We're looking to take a deeper dive into just all of the things that are, fall under the district alignment, the MTSS alignment, the continuity from PK to 12. And then it's that vision of a learner information. I think it's transurable or translatable at the high school level to call it vital skill development. We really laid the framework with our, all of our classes this year. There's so many opportunities that we get to be in front of students, either a whole class, individual, different courses, different opportunities where our kids are in the community or in other buildings. All of those, I think, are, we're approaching and attacking with more intentionality of, how do we get them to understand who they are, the skills that they're bringing to the, the opportunity, and, and what that looks like? So we had class meetings. As I think one of the student reps said, we had a career fair, a college fair last Friday. We had a class meeting in front of them to say, who, how, why, what way. It doesn't matter if you don't know, it doesn't matter if you're a four-year track, a two-year track, or unknown. This is what we want you to get from it. So all of those things, those full bullet points that, again, I think, drive and are anchors for the whole district really are so diverse and applicable at a secondary level, because our kids are coming and going out from that building in such unique opportunities that we're really just trying to do a much more intentional job, getting them to check off some of those boxes at some parts of their day.
And just threw a few pictures in there, just to kind of amplify some of those bits. Rates and the activities and the teamwork, and the fun is really important. It's a lot of times the kids, why, when they want to come to school, and what motivates them to come? Throw that football picture in there with the rainbow in the background, just one of our home games here. But in the top middle there, that's a, that's a math class. And one of their points of emphasis lately has been to get kids writing more, moving more, obsolescing together, beating different formulas up, and not just sitting at their desk, like maybe a more traditional math classroom would do. Top right is a picture of the band and choir classes collaborating together with the school song. Fun to see those two groups coming together to do that. Bottom right is a science classroom, and just that lab setting and the hands-on aspect. Bottom middle is a whole classroom as well, where you see an instructor up front and then a number of ninth and 10th graders working through their curriculum. This next page has more hands-on and kind of some unique opportunities our students have, just with OJT, that bottom right, there's a, one of our students getting high school credit for his on-the-job training at Holman, working on that bus. Top there are a couple of our right tech students, the heavy equipment class in Buffalo. Top left, that's, that's a welding class. You guys have invested a bit of money into welding the last couple of years through our capital process. Teamster Derby, you see a student, he's one of my, just an awesome student in the middle there. He's got green on, and he's got a, he's got a acetylene torch in his hand, and he is not confident. But Derby's walking him through the steps, start practicing how to lay a nice bead down. Torch, and a lot of kids learning there in that setting. It was really fun to see, because they're setting up for their next work in that new lab. You guys, close to 20 grand, and through capital in our welding department here in the last, last two years. Bottom left is one of our high school seniors last year, working at the elementary level. And that integrity, trust those guys to go be role models for the young ones at the elementaries and the nature that so many of our classes are there as well. So just some fun outcomes, some of the opportunities we're trying to put in front of our students. They can leave the high school for part of the day, sometimes get credit for it, too.
All right, so as we know, school looks a little bit differently than when we all went to high school. These are just a couple of opportunities that Monticello has in place. And we're just trying to, you know, diversify the different ways that students can learn. There's so many different things going on with our colleges now, as well, being remote, and all those, all of those different things following COVID. Monticello has a lot of different opportunities for students to learn in a unique way. One of them happens to be our online program. This allows students to be at home. Some of our students are working full-time and doing all these classes at the same time. So what we're trying to do is just make this a little bit of an easier process for students and families to get into the program, to get online. So we're kind of aligning our, our systems to align with the MHS program, so applying online and going through our counselors, making sure that they're taking the proper classes. And then just kind of assessing our instructional models, looking at some hybrid classes through using our MHS teachers and working with Schoology, so they can create kind of an individual curriculum and, and use that to reach our, our online kiddos as well. So kind of a unique system there. And then our ALP students are coming to us with either interrupted education or some trauma that's happened. So we're trying to create different pathways for them to get to the finish line as well. What we're doing right now in try one is working with them on creating a resume, looking at interviewing skills, how do we find a job? And then hopefully in try two, we actually have OJT coming in to teach the students and helping them get a job so they can start getting credits for working. And so my goal, personal goal this year, is to just make sure that every kiddo who crosses the stage from ALP either has something lined up for themselves, internship, job, two-year or four-year, wherever they want to be at. So I want to make sure that they're ready to go once they leave our building.
And then just additional points of emphasis for us. We've really worked exclusively this year to consistently implement the same syllabus in every class. It's been really important to us. We were not super consistent prior to that, but we've, it's something we have a list of things to do. And we're midway through it. We're doing a good job with regards to what we have started. All, all syllabi in high school are much more streamlined. A few caveats with some college and the school syllabi that different colleges dictate a little bit. But it is implemented throughout the, the rest of the classes at the high school. We have tried to drill down, and it's, Lori's done a fantastic job of kind of leading the grading changes that we've really pushed into the high school. In particular, identifying what our formative grades are, our practices, and our summative grades, pulling out the non-academic-related grading practices. The courses, classes, and teachers did that very well, but there were a few places we wanted to shore up, and we need to be more consistent. That has been a spot. If you look in our grade book, almost any class, in any class in the building now, you'll see a formative category and a summative category. Clarifies for students, staff, families, anyone, what those grades are, and they're weighted. Summitives are at least 70%, is 30%. And then.
Go ahead.
The program development, just with regards to a few other specific, smaller interventions, multilingual learners, and some programs we're trying to build and enhance. Who knows? Lastly, we're just, we're trying to have fun with staff. I drew a picture on here, and Devany probably threw this up here later, but I included a picture from the other day. It's not your fault, Devany, I was doing this at like 5:00. Of a picture of one of our cooks. We're going to celebrate one of our cooks, soon to retire, as our E, our LEA award winner. The picture of all the cooks in the kitchen the other day with their hands up. And she's running through the middle of men, they're all, you should see the smiles on their faces. So it's a pretty cool picture, and it's just a fun way to celebrate the heroes we have, and trying to enhance just our, our staff climate and culture as well. We're almost done, Mr. Schubert, I don't want you to think it's taken too long. There's a picture on the left of half of the kind of lunch space at one of our lunches. We have three lunches, and there, there again, that's our why. That's, that's one of the first days of school, and there's a lot of seniors in there. We're going to get to the spot on the right from last, last spring. That's from last June, our graduating seniors. Again, that's, that's a big part of our why and what we do. We emphasize eyes up this year with staff and students. Put the phone down. Get your eyes up. You guys have heard it from us, obviously in class, because phones aren't allowed, but also in the halls and at lunch, have a conversation, trying to install those personal skills as much as we can, too, and just practice in high school.
And I would echo what our three student reps said. We've had a really great start to this school year. Our staff are doing well, our students are doing well, our freshmen are settling in. Freshmen in May are not freshmen in September, and so we know that. But it's been a very, very good start, and that building is working very hard right now. So we appreciate the support that you've helped us get to. We, we know the district office is working hard, so we've got a lot of irons in the fire, but trying to find the right priorities and keep the focus on, on, on learning and doing right by our kids.
What questions do we have?
Being received. How is eyes up being received?
No one argues with us.
Correct.
Nobody argues with you, maybe.
Well, you're right. Well, you're right. Jordy was nodding when I said it. He's heard it before.
I saw that. I couldn't tell what Natasha was thinking, though.
I think it, and you could fill me in, I think it's progressive. When you get to be a junior or a senior, you get it. You know where your priorities are, you know where your time is. It's a non-issue because they know what they need to do to launch. When you're a ninth and a 10th grader, it's still a novelty. They come out of the middle school where they didn't have a phone, and now they get to have it on them. And that's a little bit new freedom that they don't know how to manage yet. So there's a little bit more teaching that has to go in there to help them understand, and they're just not there yet, but they get there. We know they do. I'll open it up to you guys. For us, you can truly identify maybe the grade that the student is in by the draw of their phone.
From my personal experience, I definitely say when the no-phone policy was implemented last year, there definitely was some pushback due to just the sudden change, just with how students have grown accustomed to living their own lives with their phone. But definitely seeing this year that after we've had a full year of these rules, that it's really not an issue. Students are not complaining, and they're putting their phones away when asked to, and they're keeping them away, and it's not becoming a problem.
Yeah, I think I would definitely say have noticed a lot of people, there's not much pushback. There's still some pushback, I think. Some people would like to have it on them, don't particularly want to do their work. But I think also from a student standpoint, when you have it just like off of you, out of the way, it's so, you finish so much more of your work, you have less homework. It's just overall a better idea.
I think it goes back, it's a crutch. We know that, especially in some of those moments where it's hard to make, have those interpersonal connections and conversations. So it's easy just to look down, then we don't have to interact and have some of those awkward moments that come naturally in high school.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's great feedback. I think from a business world standpoint, we're seeing that we're having to teach communication courses to the bachelor degree professionals, and the self-discipline around cell phone usage in the workplace is pretty low, and the addiction to social media is very high, which we're seeing is a pretty big deterrent from success in the workplace. So, love it. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. That vital skill development that we've kind of identified is that it's transferable to that career-connected learning.
Perfect. Thank you.
Questions do we have?
I did a quick question on the data.
If I can add a personal comment, as a daughter of a man who quit his, went to school straight north of here in a one-room schoolhouse, quit at the age of 17 to join the Navy for World War II, and then waited until after he was in the Korean War to get his GED, made sure all seven of his children went to college, even though not everybody graduated, because he believed that education was so important. I have to tell you that the idea that you have so many opportunities, you've created so many opportunities for people to complete their education, you should be very proud of all of the work that you've done, and I am too. Thank you.
Hi, Casey.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the data, and we look at just year over year. It would be good in the future if, and we can go back a couple of years and concatenate together, but it would be good if, when this is presented, it's like a five-year dataset because right now we just look at year one to year two. So we don't know, are we, is it an anomaly that it dropped down or anomaly that it rose up? And if we can see more, we can pick out, you know, what was working, what wasn't. And I just think overall collectively, it would help give the board a better picture on the trajectories on there, so.
At one, I did look up graduate rates from 21, and we've been between 94.3 and 95.8 was our high. Our most recent from 24 was 95.1. So that, you're right, I agree with you, the data over time, and kind of know where we're at. So we've been consistent there, but there's so much more data there to obviously digest.
Especially with the fast bridge, this is only, we've just completed one year of it, so that's new to the high school. So we're going into year two to have some more of that longitudinal data. Yep.
Yeah, I won't ask any data-related questions because hearing that you guys just got your data too from the beginning of this year, I see that we're seeing this for the 24%, 25%, which is the end of last year. So I know why it's on here, but like Casey alluded to, it would be nice to see even more data. So I see Laura nodding her head up and down. But I just want to give some kudos to our, I mean, as a board member, it is just overwhelmingly exciting to hear some, I'm going to quote some of you, like Lori, you said, the continuity from PK to 12. And I really do, as a board member that's been here on my second term, feel that, and thank you to our superintendent for leading this. But really, all of the schools working together and feeding off of each other and learning from each other and growing some new practices, and you can really see it district-wide. And so it's been really exciting to see that with you guys working together. And you alluded to the fact that you, you know, working in the middle school, working and seeing the work that you guys have done at the high school, and then building off of that is truly incredible. But collaborative, we know, we talk about collaborative connection stuff, but seeing that happening within our school district, within classes, within teachers that are working together and the connections that they're having, even that was just briefed at the middle school, is really exciting to see that focus and that shift and you guys really working together and not having the individual silos where it's, well, it's us here at the middle school, it's us here at the high school, or us here in the elementary schools, and really working together to make sure that those transitions are smooth and that, you know, you're continuing that education process throughout as well as within the school as well, not having the silos at the high school, which is really nice to see. So I want to commend you for a lot of hard work, and we're seeing that too at this level. So it's nice to see.
They are working hard. They are just, they care about kids, and they see the value of the work that we're doing sometimes behind the scenes, and it gets pretty gritty, but they really have committed to that, and we're very grateful for them. So they are on the front line right there with us.
And one more quick story. We couldn't figure out a way to work it into the presentation, but we have TAs at our attendance office. I'll be real quick. TAs walk visitors to wherever they got to go in the building, so no one's going alone. Hagley's laughing. We have a fantastic senior, you guys, I won't use a name, but you know who it is. He was assigned to Mr. Hagley when he was coming for a meeting, and he walked with Hagley all the way up to the social studies pod. And then he didn't, I don't think he knew exactly who you were or what you were there for, obviously, but he would not stand down. He stood by Hagley for quite some time before he said, "He's okay, you can leave now, he's safe."
It didn't help that Mrs. Hansen was joking, he said to him as we were passing by, "You really need to dry in this room."
He did. He took it to heart.
He took it seriously.
He took it to heart.
Did his job.
He did exactly what he was supposed to do. He would not be much for 20 minutes.
I appreciate he escorted you to the bathroom and back.
Finally, one of the, came out and he said, "Do you know where this is?" He's like, "This Hanson said I just..." And the teacher won't say, "I'll have to go back down there." He did a great job. I told him, well rewarded for his...
Those are the kind of kids that we have.
Great kids.
Thank you for humoring me.
It's awesome. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to item number eight, innovation and leadership. Welcome to the podium, our superintendent, Eric Olson, to go through the scoreboard's goals that we set for, for the superintendent for this year.
Awesome. So I'll just tell you, today was, like Matt said, it was one of my most proud moments, like hearing the board talk about the strategic plan in your questions and your comments, and then hearing everybody be aligned is something that we've worked tremendously on. We know that collective efficacy is the number-one indicator of student achievement. And so getting all that to align starts with you guys. And I'm going to tell you, it was the first time in my career where I hear everybody talking the language that we want you to be talking and questions we want you to be asking. And so we're going to get to a lot of that data and what we're going to do as a district, starting with me, hopefully setting some of the new strategies forth that we haven't been able to get to yet, but not for lack of trying. But this year, we're going to set them. So here we go. I've talked about collective efficacy, and you've heard it as a string through everybody's presentation. Really looking at the strategic plan. The strategic plan drives what you do. The strategic plan is all in that strategic priority circle. It's listed there. So we've started it seven years ago with the community. We identified the most important pieces of education, and then we make sure that we stick to those four strategic areas and we don't deviate. And we've done that for seven years. Now, we've built some things on there. We realized that you couldn't find a lot of English learners represented in the strategic plan, and we couldn't find some alignment in some of our special education teaching. And so we've added that. But everything else is there, and so that is how we're driving the district. But when you look at the circle, both the outside and the inside, it's all about continuous improvement and having people be open for that. And that's what drives, that's what drives success, is being able to always understand and reflect of where you're at and where you want to go, and using the blueprint as your guide. And then the inside of the circle is really some of those components that Ms. Hanson just talked about, but they're building those skills that Mike Branson noticed in the business world, we need to develop even more strong. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Students could say that they've been on a continuous journey. Jordy wasn't maybe there right away the first year. Saw the pushback, and maybe it was even part of the pushback, but then all of a sudden, both of them start to realize, and Natasha mentioned, that you recognize as a learner that it's not the best. So you could stick on, I could stick on this page to drive everything that we do, because this is right here, everything that we are doing. But as far as the board goes, they wanted me to look at four things specifically this year. School district finances, communication and community relationships, governance team, and teaching and learning. And so those will be my goal areas, but I'm not going to go off on a tangent. I'm going to connect those to the things that our people are doing so that we're all aligned. So the first one, I'm looking at school district finances. This one will have my attention all the way mostly through November 3rd and then November 4th. And then I will be able to step back a little bit and let the star CFO take over because she does such an amazing job. But right now, the school district needs me to lead a process of engagement and engaging our voters. So we're going to do that through two-way community engagement. And so the strategies would be to lead 60-plus community-slash-school events for informational sharing of the operating levy. And the second strategy is to orchestrate 2,500 phone calls. And those are the two strategies and then of that first goal. And then the second goal is to create several modes of communication regarding the operating levy. Build at least one podcast. That one has been accomplished. Eight video messages, as you have seen. We are sitting at about three right now. 10 social media posts. Orchestrate the building of a website that has been built. Mailings, we have two of them that are in the works. And incorporate staff voice through a series of check-in meetings across the district. This is the one that, once I was at the meetings this past week, and I still have a couple buildings left to get to, but it's like those game time adjustments that you realize that you need to make, and this one's really important to me. And so if we just create content more from the district office lens, we're going to miss some of the voices that we need to capture, and miss some of the modalities, whether it be TikTok or whether it be Instagram. And so right now, we've, we started working last Friday. Ms. Hanson had a great idea of connecting with Ben Lundquist, who is a very artistic, very creative, content-driven person, does a lot for the city, does things for money, arts, and has the ability to create some things for us. And so when the staff are giving me ideas, I don't want to let those go because that's their opportunity to be part of the operating levy and help drive it. And so there have been some, several very good ideas of content and events that they think we should do. And so through that, I've been able to now work with Tina and make sure that we look at our ways that we can use the strength of our staff, and we're going to give Ben opportunity to share some social media messages, TikTok, some platforms that I'm not comfortable with. Believe it or not, kids, but I have not yet been on TikTok, so that's not going to be my forte. But those are our two, I should say, those are our two goals, and then our three strategies within the bond and levy campaign. And these are, you know, absolutely mission-critical. When you listen to our people share their story, it's that story that I know that we all want to continue. I think we're pretty proud, new board members saying it so eloquently. I'm very proud of what you guys have built. I'm very proud of what you guys have built. Our second goal area that the board has for me is communication, community relationships. And one goal here and then three strategies, but lead monthly opportunities for our school community to come together in a positive, healthy, proactive fashion. And so going to continue money on the move, that's a place to, I think, connect the community. When you're going into manufacturing, when you're going to parks, when you're going to many different places of the community, you're gathering in a proactive fashion. So people can tug on my shoulder and ask me questions, but more importantly, we're doing fun things with kids. And that's what education should be all about. And so the next strategy is to facilitate four to six community listening sessions, use a combination of levy and programmatic topics. Building leaders will also be delivering community engagement sessions in their buildings too. I've been getting around as director of teaching and learning, Laura Stebner has, but really starting to plant the seed for some of the things that we see that they need to be doing, and then having Laura make sure that, as far as the teaching and learning goes, that she's really going to up her commitment monthly to every building, and that's by design, so that we have the support at the building level to make sure that, you know, whatever they're choosing, or whatever their goals they are, sorry, whatever goals they have, whether it be in the community relationship building or whether it be teaching and learning, that we have a plan to make sure that we're increasing the involvement. And then the last strategy is for me to continue building student voice opportunities across the district. These two students know firsthand. That last spring, we took a trip together to make sure that we knew how to incorporate student voices, and I'm going to continue to do modeling of ways to get kids involved, but I also expect our building leaders to find ways to have student voice be represented at the table. And so anything that I'm saying up here is also an expectation that I have and have had for buildings. These are all part of our family engagement plan that we built last year, and so these should be things that we are either in the works doing or that we've already built. Governance team, the strategic plan. And we'll start to now talk a little bit about some of those questions between the goal area three and four. But we do need, as a board, is to set routines more frequently at the board. And so Laura and I have talked that we want to have during work sessions, especially three times a year. Instead of a beginning and an end, we have to have a couple sessions built in where we're starting to look at data with you guys so that as long as, while the teachers and building leaders are talking about it, you have time to be curious too. Because if we wait till the end of the year to get that second one, we don't have any time for curiosities to look at trends. We have some great people in here with strong data analysis, and we need to make sure that we're, data's part of our landscape, and it's not just to check a box. It's to make sure that we're using and that it's drilling all the way down to the, every person in each building. So this presentation that I'm doing tonight, the presentations that the buildings are doing tonight, they need to repeat those. Because if your people don't know, it's not going to happen. So whether it's at a small group or a big group, that these need to be repeated so that everybody starts with that game plan in their hands. And so that's what strategic plan is. To breathe life in it, it's hard, because you can get taken away from, we don't just make an object or a widget. Believe it or not, 700 staff, over 10,000 family members or parents slash family members that have guardian rights, and almost 4,000 students can cause... And almost 4,000 students can cause challenges during the day to impede the production line of learning. No excuses. This is our job to breathe life from our strategic plan into planned efforts. And that's what you're going to see this year. This strategic, our strategic plan is going to be in front of you a lot more this year. And we can look at the, the amount of frequency, but at least my, my mind was at least three. But I want to make sure that you guys have that in your, you know, feedback for me. So keep that and make sure you come back with some response here after my last goal area here. But last goal area, but aligning the student achievement work across the district. Everything the building principal said, that's just echoed here on this last goal. And it's to make sure that Director of Teaching and Learning has her time with each building, making sure that they have the supports aligned like Jeff had shared about the different supports that we have access to. So people like our behavior, our BCBAs, behavior analysts, and then also our mindfulness coaches and our instructional support. So making sure that we have the people available to address needs and curiosities when we look at both longitudinal and each data point throughout the school year. And then the last one is the one that, you know, I said, hey Casey, I promise you, we were totally aligned. But we need to be in front of you talking about the student data. And so we're going to create that space here this year. That way the district has something to move forward with. It hasn't been part of a landscape. And now that we're going to build it as part of the landscape, we're all on the same page. And it's going to be an exciting place to be. Yeah, so I think those are the areas that the superintendent is going to be working on as, as goal areas that the school board wanted me to work on. But making sure that it's all connected. Because if it's not, then now we're working on things that, that are new for buildings. And that's the last thing we want to do. We want to stick to the best practices that we've built in our strategic plan and make sure that those come alive. And we've made checkpoints for them to be discussed. All right, so love to entertain questions. I'll probably defer to somebody in here because I, I get to do that to make sure that it's, to make sure that it's truly being aligned, not just me talking. We should all be able to ask our staff, our students, any of these things if they're, if they're really coming alive. I think the coolest moment I had is the last two years, I've, I get to get into some classrooms. The education class always has me come in and talk about leadership. I asked them point blank if they can name the vision of the learner and if they can name the strategic priorities. And they always have been able to do it. And the teacher, I'm sure the second year knew I was going to ask that. But the first year, it was random and they could name it. So I think for me, that means that it's coming alive and it's breathing, and that's what we want. Questions?
Board questions? It can be too. I mean, and we set these goals for you too after your, your last review. And honestly, if everything works together, the data will be there. So what's nice for us to see after the presentation from the middle school and the high school is the effort and the work that is all of this now coming into fruition. And the data should follow with all of the work that's being put into place. So this feels really good.
I think it's slow go too, that we have to always know. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't dive in and ask and have lots of curiosities. But like some of our goals that have been set are really, really big data jumps. But at least if we're talking about them all the way down to PL's professional learning communities, all the way up to the school board, we'll be able to be all curious at the same time in, in game time type of format so that adjustments can be made.
Sorry, it wasn't, you couldn't hear me there. It's not going to be an overnight correction. I mean, it'll take time, get everyone aligned. So I saw Jamie's comments that she made earlier as well with the staff and the hard work that everyone's doing. It's with the data, we, we have to understand where we've been. Does it align with where we're going? How far are we off from our goals? Are we ahead of our goals or projections, which would be greatly positive always, obviously? Then do we just raise our projections? Do we keep them the same? But I think collectively, yes, everyone working together between the schools, the staff, the administration, the teachers. I think we're making positive strides, positive steps in the right directions out there. So I, I think it's really good. Yes, to Jamie's point too, as we lay these goals all for the superintendent. But I, we're excited for the year ahead. Information, the meetings, all the work that everyone's doing, the work the board's doing, the staff's doing, et cetera. The students, everything the students are doing as well.
Other questions? And I know data, it is significant, you know, one of our goals, 70%. And current, you know, from the last data that we have, it's 40s, 50s. That's a significant jump. But progress is what, you know, we like to see. What other questions?
Are we seeing in the data, are we seeing any lingering reflection of the COVID lockdown too?
Yeah, we looked at, Laura and I touched base on that our last meeting, I think it was that last week probably. We started to look at some of those data points and, you know, I think last year, you guys did a good job as a board asking for some cohort data. So rather than just year to year, it's really important to also put sets of data that track cohorts. So like tracking a fourth grade class all the way through eighth grade. That's how we can really see if there's trends and kind of to like, Casey, you asked that question of what happened to that one grade level. I think it's important then to go back and watch it to see how we could determine what happened to that grade level. And I think it's, I think it's the cohort data. So we'll make sure that some of the data dives that we're able to do as part of work sessions. And I think what, how we're going to embed them is part of work sessions so that we can just free flow talk, have the people there when their data comes up. If we're talking about attendance, you know, maybe we're having everybody there. But if we're diving into literacy, that's a more complex topic. And it might be, you know, elementary only for those work sessions. But it's just to keep it all in front of us and keep talking the same language. It's going to be something that Laura brought to us this year from her past experience. And I'm excited to support our people, number one, and that's what has already started. But then number two is to, to make sure that, that we can, we give enough time to make adjustments.
Anything else? All right, nothing further. Thank you for-
You guys are smiling. I, I don't know if that's a, a good thing. I'll take it as a good thing.
Do we have any questions from our student representatives? No? Okay.
They will for me. They had lots for me in the van. All right, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Olson. All right, now we're moving on to item number nine, safe and healthy culture. Help me welcome to the podium Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder, to go over our preliminary levy.
All right, good evening. Gavin's going to pull up our table summary for our levy first before I go through Eller's presentation. Normally you have two chances to look at our preliminary tax levy. But unfortunately, with how our board meetings were lining up and the state deadline, they have until September 8th to give out the tax reports to schools. So that didn't come out till later in the day, that Monday where we had a board meeting. So I wasn't able to digest our levy fully before that board meeting. But overall, our levy is going down 2%, 328,000 overall. Some highlights with our levy. Wherever there's a calculation based on student enrollment, our levy is going down because it's, our enrollment is going down. So our voter-approved referendum has enrollment tied to it. Our local optional revenue, our long-term facility maintenance revenue, those three formulas are based on enrollment. So we're seeing decreases in those three line items. Some line items where it's based on expenses, it's increasing. Our unemployment insurance is going up. We did have a downward adjustment last year based on a 2024 number. So that, the state takes a while to catch up with our expenses and what we report. So we had, we estimate our unemployment expenses too high. So we had a downward adjustment last year. And so for 2026, we're estimating about our, our unemployment insurance that isn't tied to summer term employment to be around $50,000. Our other post-employment benefits, which is based on retiree insurance with the sunset clause, that went up. We had a couple more retirees than last year. And then also our average insurance increase for last plan year, starting October 1, 2024 to this past August was a seven and a half percent increase. So that's where we're seeing our increases in our general fund levy. But overall decrease for the general fund. The community service fund is seeing an increase. And again, a couple where they're going down based on enrollment. But then our school age care, that has an additional amount for expenses providing services to children with disabilities in our magic adventures program. So they're seeing more costs in that program. Our debt service fund is going down overall, mainly because with our long-term facility debt service payment, we're seeing a decrease in our levy, but an increase in state aid. Overall, we're getting about the same amount of money for that bond payment, but it's just how it's coming in is changing overall. This is based on, you know, before a successful operating referendum is passed. So once we know how that shakes out in November, if it is successful, I, I would show what that tax impact would be overall. But for now, the state can only give us what they know. It's a 40-page document where 30 pages are calculations. We're not like the cities and county where we can, you know, put what our levy should be. It's all based on a lot of calculations. Any questions on the preliminary tax levy? I had a handout on there with school taxes for, for the 2025 and some other communities for a similar value home, just so you had that for comparison. And then Eller's also just updated their presentation. And I can highlight some of those slides for you. As we heard when we've gone around to different meetings, that one person was really excited about the three presentations we had in March, where I think I presented on the financial forecast, we had Eller's come in, we had our attorney come in, and they were, they just loved it. They're like, you need to make highlights of this school board meeting and get that out there so more people knew what was happening at that board meeting. So we'll see what we can do with that. But just a couple of things with this slideshow that they updated for us. Now November 4th, we have a question out there for an operating referendum. This generates general revenue for our general operations. The max length is 10 years. And as you know, school districts have the opportunity to auto-renew a referendum one time for the same length and amount that isn't existent. The maximum that a school could do is 2,341 per pupil. And what else? This is just, yeah, based on referendum market. So if somebody has farm acres, it's a house, the garage and one acre. But I think that's also on a different slide. We, school districts as a whole rely heavily on referendums. The revenue hasn't kept pace with inflation. So this is our one opportunity to ask the voters to help us generate more revenue. And this is a chart that Eller's puts together for school districts where it shows where the refer, the general education formula allowance hasn't kept up with inflation. A question was asked, why do they use 2003? And their answer was in 2002, 2003, during that school year or legislative session, a portion of the referendum revenue, which was $415 per pupil and the assurance of mastery revenue, which was $14 per pupil, were eliminated. And they were rolled into that general education formula. So funding kind of changed at that point with referendums and the general ed formula allowance. So that's why they go back to that point in time and look at things from that point. Like I said, we rely heavily on referendums. We're not like cities and counties, like I mentioned earlier, where we can just say we need $20 million. It's all based on calculations. We have to ask the voters to help us with revenue. This slide just had different taxing types. So the middle column is the referendum market value where this is how Monticello is made up and what portion of the community would raise that referendum where the net tax capacity, if we had a bond referendum or a capital tech levy, you see that the percent for businesses is higher because more of that revenue being generated is coming from businesses. I believe that's the main point they wanted to, to make with that slide. This is their presentation. So this slide has the school tax comparison, kind of what I had with that other handout, based on a home value of $375,000. You can see that Annandale and St. Cloud are, their school taxes for that property type is lower than what Monticello is. So Monticello is that blue bar. And then the other surrounding communities for our school taxes at that home value are higher. At Buffalo, Hanover, Montrose, Maple Lake, Becker, Big Lake, Elk River and St. Michael, Albertville. So for school taxes, I believe, you know, the Excel power plant is a big help for us. They take a large portion of the school taxes and city and county as well. This chart has operating referendum comparison. So below us, St. Michael and St. Cloud, they don't have an operating referendum. Annandale has just a little bit, $79 per pupil. And then where the blue bar, and then Big Lake, Buffalo, Hanover, Montrose, Maple Lake, Becker, Elk River are above us when you look at the operating referendum per pupil. And this is as of now, you know, based on whatever happens in November would change this comparison. Like I said, seasonal recreational property cabins, they don't have an impact on school or operating referendum. The egg and buildings, again, it's only the house, garage and one acre. I think where's the main point for that slide? Some district-specific information, our question is on the ballot for November 4th, our operating referendum question. And it's very technical in how that question is written. We have to have an attorney review it and make sure it, it matches the state statute. And what it's stating is that we're trying to generate, we're revoking $775 per pupil. And we want to replace that with 1,550 per pupil. That is the revenue it is generating. And this slide has what the tax impact would be for a family based on their home market value. So the previous question is just the revenue generating, and this slide has a tax impact. We have one column showing what would be revoked. This middle column is what would be added, and then the far column is the change with the approved question. And then just looking at the election timeline, right now we're in September, October. So we have some legal, you know, mailing that we have to do to the residents of the community. November 4th is the election, and then you have to canvas those results between November 7th and the 14th. And I believe the last couple slide, or before I get there, when will we get the new revenue? So this, if we had a successful question in November, the board certifies that levy in December. People would see that starting in 2026, and that revenue would be available to us for fiscal year '26, '27. So it's delayed a little bit. And then the last couple slides, what I talked about in our truth and taxation hearing. If people have higher increases in their taxes, there are different ways for them to work with their tax specialists to see how they can get some refunds with large increases. Any questions or anything you want to dive deeper on with the preliminary levy? And it is an action item tonight. And it should be approved, the levy to the max, just to make sure we have. The state still sends out reports and we have to give it to, to the county by October 1st. But we want to make sure if they miss something, we capture it.
Those are going to be my clarifying question on the value of the tax, the percentage where, with property tax levy to the maximum. Last year, we had 10%, 10.01, I think I recall from last year. So the actual percentage of-
Last year, I thought we saw a decrease.
Yeah, that was two years ago.
It was two years ago.
Yeah.
10.01.
They all blend together.
I think it's worth noting on the operating referendum allowance comparison bar chart that you showed with which districts have operating referendums in place is if we do pass in November- operating referendums in place is if we do pass in November, it would appear that we would jump to the far right. But as you've noted, several of these districts have operating levies up for vote as well. So that whole chart will dramatically change, and I think it's important for anybody, any voters listening, that they recognize that we aren't gonna all of a sudden be out in an outlier above everybody else if we pass this.
I think too, as I've been able to get around and see lots of different people, I think the thing that's, I think, really eye-opening for a lot of constituents in town is like when you look at freezing your income since 2003 as far as enrollment goes. So enrollment, if it's steady since 2003, and the amount from the state hasn't, has not kept up since 2003. I mean, I just think back to my own family and where I was, you know, 22 years ago. And if, and where, like if I was in the same profession, teaching, I would have started double the salary of where I was back in 2003 after teaching and start, starting my career as, no, that would have been as a teacher for 10 years. And so I just think it's really important to know that we've done a really good job here in Monticello, fiscally being responsible, building programs, but building them on more creativity and conservatives, being conservative like Tina is for us, and driving us as leaders to be conservative, but yet be creative at the same time. And we've built some amazing things, as we just listened to. And I couldn't be more proud. When I, when you hear that, then you just start to realize that 2003 impact, both our student enrollment is the same and the inflation hasn't kept up. What we've done is incredible, because that is the number one way to generate revenue per student, is to have more students. And we haven't been growing, so.
And to build off of what Mark said too, if we pass the referendum, then we'll be more towards the average for the state versus if we don't, then we jump down to zero, and we're looking at that $2 million cut. So like Mark said, it doesn't all of a sudden put us at the very, very top. That's not what we're asking for as a district either, so.
Well, just to clarify, we would cut $2 million going into next year and $6 million the year after if it doesn't pass.
Thank you for that.
Yep, 10% of our budget.
Very significant. Would make significant changes within our district. All right, any other questions for Director Burkholder?
I'd like to go one more time to the slide that shows the percentage of, percentages of where the tax distribution is going to be. And it shows that 43% of the taxes is going to be on residents and 43% on commercial. That's a pretty well-distributed tax.
That's for if it was a bond referendum question or a capital projects question. So question is an operating referendum where that middle column is how the tax impact would fall.
Okay.
Tina, that one clarifier too, that you and I started discussions, and I think I understand it now, but I just want to make sure. So Farm said, so it's not all their land, it's.
One acre.
It's one acre.
So if they look at their valuation notice that they received from the county, towards the lower half of the page, there's a referendum market value amount. And they would use that amount to go on our website and go to that tax calculator to find out what their tax impact would be for the house, garage, and the one acre.
Any other questions? All right, this is an action item to approve the property tax levy to the max.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark Branson, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Director Burkholder. All right, now we will move on to item B. Help me welcome to the podium Director of Human Resources Rob Danicker to go over second reading of policies.
All right, thank you Chair Seben, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We have nine policies for second read this evening. So as a reminder, the policy committee meets prior to the first board meeting every month and reviews policies that are on the agenda for revision or review. And just of note, because we've been following a kind of a standard operating procedure for over two years now, the number of policies coming to the board every month is actually gonna start to shrink a little bit. And so, yeah, so yay us, right? I know that the meetings have been building to a crescendo to this point, and I hate to limit my time in the future, but as it were. So we'll dive right in. So the first one for second read tonight is 418. This is drug-free workplace, drug-free school. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and health, healthful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances, medical cannabis, non-intoxicating cannabinoids, edible cannabinoid products, and controlled substances without a physician's prescription. We reviewed this one and made some amendments this month due to some statutory updates from spring of '25. In this case, there was a statutory update to preclude any bias towards, basically to, for the district, taking action against people who are participating in a, the Minnesota Patient Registry Program or a tribal medical cannabis program. Any questions on 418? Okay, moving forward, next one up is 501, School Weapons Policy. The purpose of this policy is to assure safe school environment for students, staff, and the public. And some revisions from MSBA, and this one, there was some movement of some definitions, which Board Member Branson caught last time. And then specifically, there was the addition of active shooter language towards the back end of the policy as well. Just in terms of the school district must electronically file an after-action review for any active shooter incident. So some reporting and compliance pieces there. Any questions on policy 501? Okay, moving forward to policy 503, Student Attendance. The purpose of this policy, the school board believes that regular school attendance is directly related to success in academic work, benefits students socially, provides opportunities for important communications between teachers and students, and establishes regular habits of dependability important to the future of the student. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance, is intended to be positive and not punitive. There was a minor change in statute this spring at the state level that, and that's reflected in our revision that we're bringing forward here. It no longer lists the superintendent as an agent of the district. That can be the truant officer or attendance officer for the district. In some smaller districts, that might be the case. In Monticello, it likely has not been the case for some time. And so we just updated this draft policy to reflect that change. Any questions on 503? All right, moving forward, 515, Protection and Privacy of People Records. The purpose of this policy is as follows. The school district recognizes its responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of people records and the protection of the privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and state statutes. The main, the bulk of the revisions here, again, brought forward by statutory change. Specifically in this case, there was an update in state law this past spring, which now has made much of a parent's personal contact information private data. And the same was done for student data a couple of years back. But there's not a whole lot of dots to connect if parent data is still public and student data is private, to find out who those students are, where they reside, et cetera. So the legislature really tried to fix that gap or that loophole in what is public data or directory data, as we call it in school districts. So any questions on policy 515? All right, moving forward to 516, Student Medication and Telehealth. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when administering non, administering, excuse me, non-emergency prescription medication to students at school. A couple of years back, the legislature had updated language that affects this policy by carving out epinephrine auto-injectors. And so we had updated the policy at that time, this past spring. The legislature reflected on the fact that auto-injectors are one of a handful of delivery systems for delivering that epinephrine. And so really, that is the bulk of the changes for policy 516, is just reflecting that terminology change from auto-injectors to the more broad delivery systems. Any questions on policy 516? All right. Moving forward, this is a new policy that we reviewed this month. We do not have this currently in Monticello, but it is a policy that is recognized by the Minnesota School Board Association. And it's relatively minor, but it does have some impacts in terms of understanding the policy. So this is 523, Policies Incorporated by Reference. The purpose of this policy kind of explains what I was referring to. Certain policies as contained in the school district's policies are applicable to students as well as to employees. To avoid undue duplication, the school district provides notice by this section of the application incorporation by reference of the following policies that also apply to students. So there's five policies within the 400 series, which typically refers to employees that also have impact in the student world. There was our 413, Harassment and Violence, 417, Chemical Use and Abuse, 418, Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free School, 419, Tobacco-Free Environment, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-Related Devices and Electronic Delivery Devices, and finally 420, which is Students and Employees with Sexually Transmitted Infections and Diseases and Certain Other Communicable Diseases and Infectious Conditions. Any questions on the inclusion of 523 for second read this evening? Okay, moving forward, 534, School Meals. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that students receive healthy and nutritious meals through the school district's nutrition program, and that school district employees, families, and students have the shared understanding of expectation regarding meal charges. To that extent, there's been, ever since the state of Minnesota made school meals universal and free. A couple of years back, there's been some modifications as that has been rolled out and implemented. And so that is about half the changes in policy 534 that we brought forward have to do with that. And then there is a local change, a local origin of change in here as well regarding staff meals. And so just clarifying how the district will treat staff meals, staff balances, and staff negative accounts. Any questions on draft, or the policy 534 for second read tonight? All right, moving forward, 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. The purpose of this policy is to provide for timely determination of the school calendar and school day. In this case, there is a short-lived amendment that was brought forward by the legislature this year. It affects only school years '26, '27, and '27, '28. Both of those years, Labor Day falls relatively late. And so the legislature has created a carve-out so that if districts would like to approve calendars that start those years, anywhere between September 1st and Labor Day, they can do so at their discretion without any sort of external review by the Department of Education or the state as a whole. Any questions on 602? I should state on 602, there has been no determination made if we're actually going to take advantage of that or not. That'll come later with school calendar conversations. All right, finally, number 709, Student Transportation Safety Policy. Purpose of this policy is to provide safe transportation for students and to educate students on safety issues and the responsibility of school bus ridership. This is one of our longest policies that we have, so long, we don't even have page numbers on it. So, but I think it's about 27 pages long. The last 10 or so pages have to do with procedures as it relates to district rule and policy enforcement on buses. The legislature did make some changes this year that affect the policy as well, and that's why we brought it forward, specifically around against school bus safety for students, timelines, things of that. And so the legislature had loosened a little bit some of the restrictions or expectations they had put in place a couple of years ago on that school bus safety training. Any questions on 709? And with that, we come to the conclusion of the presentation of the nine for second read tonight, Chair Seben.
Awesome. This is an action item.
Recommend we accept the policies as updated and read.
Second.
Moved by Mary Bartel, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Director Danicker, for going through that. And I think it's fair to say that we don't take our policy lightly here, as opposed to our no-page-number transportation policy. So thank you, appreciate that. And that brings us to adjournment on our school board meeting here on Monday, September 22nd at 7:54. Our next school board meeting will be Monday, October 6, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you for joining us tonight.